Welcome to this session on international growth productivity and capital comparisons. I think we've got three very interesting papers here, quite related to each other. So each paper giver has 20 minutes to present. I'll be raising my hand or whatever if you're running out of time. And then we'll have 10 minutes of questions after each paper. So without any further ado, let's hand over to Philippa.
It is important all knowledge that is produced. We know that some of these intangible assets are already included within the national account boundaries, in particular software and databases, as well as research and development and mineral exploration and artistic originals, which we bundle together in this OIPP, so other intellectual property kind of compound. In the next iteration of the data set, we will try to split that, by the way. So those who are really interested in delving into the mining industry or the creative industry, that would be an additional feature. But crucially, what we argue in line with the CHS framework is that there is also other knowledge-based assets that are produced and that are not currently included within the national account asset boundary. Crucially, some of these in the future, there's obviously discussion within the statistical community, notably about marketing and data. But at the moment, that's what we have, and so that's what really we try to contribute. So we point out that there's at least some additional assets, notably design, new financial products, and then some three key aspects of economic competencies, which are market research and branding, which I'll refer to as brand, just to make it roll off the tongue a little bit more, and organizational capital and training. And so these are the intangible assets that at the moment, national accounts do not allow to include into gross accounting exercises and in general to have data on it. We try to, and I would argue we manage to include these into our UCLM Intangible Pro database, where we provide information at the industry level, both on data, so on capital, labor output, hours worked. And crucially, we integrate these non-national accounts intangibles into the national account framework. So the data has two modules. So one is the statistical module, which is the sort of, we can think of it as a repository of national accounts. And then we expand this with the analytical module, both are available right now, and there's a new release coming. And the analytical module is really the one that includes non-national account intangibles. It uses harmonized capital stocks. So every stock is computed with the perpetual inventory method. And it also performs a quality adjustment for ICT assets, so we take care of differences in price defectors. The main goal, and one of its main, obviously the data, because it's fully integrated with national accounting, can be used for all sorts of analysis. But the key feature that is relevant for our line of work is really that it allows to fully include intangibles, intangible assets within empirical analysis, and it is consistent with the theoretical framework that I briefly sketched out just now. So why is it important to have intangible assets when we think about productivity? One first aspect, which is crucial, is that obviously labor productivity and by extension, obviously GDP, is affected by whether we do or don't include non-national accounts intangibles. If we think that, so PQ is GDP, you can split it into PY, which would be the national account boundary and the non-national account boundary. You can split then consumption, investment, and these non-national accounting tangibles. When you add these in terms of level, obviously your output grows because these investments is additional output. However, the relationship between non-national, the inclusion of non-national accounts intangibles into our analysis has not such a straightforward effect when we look at the growth of labor productivity. In particular, we can think of it in this way. So the growth rate of the adjusted value added of the adjusted GDP will be, would depend on the relative growth rate of these new intangibles that we include. So are they growing faster or slower in relative terms and how important they are? So this is more of a formal description, where obviously it's the weighted average using shares of nominal investment in adjusted GDP as weight. And so the relationship when we move from levels to growth becomes less straightforward. And that's why it is important to include non-national accounts intangibles into our analysis. The second implication, which is something that has been already covered by the keynote today, and I really hope that this event theory that Chad was talking about is not true, so that my presentation doesn't taint your memory of his presentation, has to do to how we measure TFP, which is obviously as a residual in a kind of solo residual framework. We have here that, there's two key takeaways. Obviously, when we start including non-national accounting tangibles as a capital, we have additional inputs, so new capital services. But also, having this measure of national, non-national accounting tangibles also allows us to cover the, have a better understanding of the innovation activity that is happening within an economy. So in this framework, you would have innovation that would be the growth, TFP growth, which would be the sort of free, freely available information and the paid-for knowledge that companies and sectors acquire. And you can have therefore a measure of innovation within this theoretical framework that I just described with the upstream and the downstream sector. In particular, if we then go back to how the exclusion of intangible assets affects TFP, we have this framework, which is very similar in fact to the J-curve idea. So obviously, the relationship intuitively, one would think, well, if you are excluding the capital services from intangibles, your TFP should go up. But actually, by you are excluding the input, but you're also excluding outputs, which is the second term here. And at the same time, because you're not including the shares, the non-national accounts, also your shares that you use as weight for labor and capital will be mismeasured. And so the fact on TFP, evidence suggests that tends to be positive, but that's an empirical fact. And theoretically speaking, it doesn't have to be like that. And that explains why it is important to have as much of, as accurate as possible measure of the non-national account intangible assets. Now, what does it matter, or rather empirically, when we bring this to the data, what is it that we found? There is obviously a growing discussion around the slowdown of productivity and in particular, TFP. If we think, as I was arguing just now, that TFP and national and intangible assets capture two aspects or two components of innovation, it becomes interesting to see what would these contributions, would the contribution of innovation has been to labor productivity growth has been doing. What we find in this empirical exercise, we look at EU9 aggregates, UK, US, there's also Japan, but it didn't fit in this line. What we find essentially is that the contribution of intangible assets has stayed strong over both pre and during the financial crisis, and it seems to have kept up. In contrast, TFP seems to have been suffering from a slowdown and weakening, especially during the financial crisis, but also subsequently, it hasn't quite recovered yet. So it seems that what is really, what is really happening or what the main challenge that we're facing at the moment is a problem with the diffusion mechanism of knowledge. So knowledge is being created, but for some reason, it is it's not, sorry, it is not diffusing, let me take this out. It is not diffusing as smoothly as it was in the past. So another crucial aspect, and here we, yeah. So if we go back to this idea of where TFP comes from, part of it comes from an upstream sector, but also part of it will come from a downstream sector. And so what we try to do here is to investigate what is the relationship between the intangible capital services, so the contribution of paid-for knowledge with respect to TFP, so the freely available knowledge that we have in the economy. And this plots the years 1996 to 2013, so the up to and including the financial crisis. Those, the dots with an X are specifically the years between 2018 and 2013, so the years of the crisis, if you will. And then the red line is a post-crisis period. And we do here find, to be fair, a sort of weakening of this relationship. So it seems that spillovers from the intangible asset are somewhat reducing or losing steam somewhat. However, it is important to note that there's significant heterogeneity across countries. In particular, we've checked, and if you remove Finland and check here, that this relationship isn't as stable as you'd like it to be. So it seems that overall, intangibles are still driving some level of spillovers. It has weakened a little bit, but not as dramatically as we might have thought. Now, here we are looking at intangible as a whole, so including national account ones, non-national account ones, innovative properties and economic competencies. It then becomes quite interesting, obviously, this bundle of intangible assets includes different kinds of assets and have different kinds of features. So it becomes interesting to explore which assets are, how the relationship between intangible assets and TFP and spillovers changes across groups of assets. And so this is exactly what we do in the second slide. So this is an econometric exercise with double differences. Here, obviously, I've reported only the intangible assets, but we include tangible as well as hours worked and labor composition. And we do fix effects, random effect tests, the husband test suggests that random effects are efficient, but the results are essentially very similar across. And then we split as well, we do a GMM to account for the generative reverse causality. The takeaway here is that intangible, so columns one and two tell us that intangible assets have been contributing to TFP. There is a positive relationship there. In column three and four, we split this between national account and non-national account, that's NNA. And we find that this has been driven essentially by non-national account intangible assets. We then in columns five and six, account for the post-2013 period. And we do find again that, that is, column five shows a negative interaction. So it seems that indeed, after the financial crisis, there has been a weakening of this mechanism. But then when we split it again, this weakening is actually driven by, seems to be driven by national account rather than non-national account. Non-national account remains strong and positive. So it seems that overall, on average, non-national account have been contributing to TFP, are linked to TFP growth. In contrast, it seems that during the financial, the aftermath of the crisis, it is the non-national account, sorry, the national account intangible assets that have somewhat broken down in terms of this diffusion mechanism. When we do the GMM, we find very similar results. Estimates are, coefficients are higher, which points to a downward bias, which is in line with previous empirical results. And so really, there's a few takeaways that we can have from this empirical analysis. First of all, obviously, to advertise a little bit more, we have a new dataset, which now gets to all the way up to 2021. And there's also a quarterly version at a more aggregate level, Global Intend Invest, which goes all the way to the end of 2023 and will be updated quarterly, or rather, will update it yearly, but with quarterly data. And this allows now to include intangible assets, both non-national account and national account fully into this kind of empirical analysis. The evidence that we put forward here and also in a paper, that will be hopefully forthcoming in the IPM, is that it seems that one of the key challenges we're facing in relation to the productivity slowdown is this breakdown of diffusion of knowledge from intangible asset. But this seemed to be, A, in particular exacerbated during the aftermath of the financial crisis and linked to national account assets. So in particular, because they represent by far the biggest share of investment and stocks, R&amp;D and software, the other intellectual property products are very tiny. So they are likely to be driving this. We are carrying out further analysis to try to disentangle exactly the origin of this phenomenon. This is however, in line with an idea that we have developed in a related paper, looking specifically at the role of data. And so data, the argument here is the, the data is actually making the knowledge included in these intangible assets more codifiable and therefore more appropriable. And that's why we see this weakening of the spillovers and the leaking, if you will, of knowledge, because intangible assets have been more appropriable, and that has ended spillovers. So based on this, this evidence seems to suggest that policies should be looking at data sharing and creating platforms for digital technologies that could reinstate or jolt back to life this diffusion mechanism, which really seems to have weakened, in particular for national account intangible assets, and in particular, the aftermath of the crisis, which is obviously not just an outcome of the crisis itself, but also the emergence of these new technologies, AI, big data, which are heavily dependent and heavily intensive in data usage, which might have stopped this diffusion mechanism. I'll leave it at that, and any questions are welcome. Thank you.
Any questions? So in this, you're saying the non-national accounts intangibles, it's down to databases. But how do you know R&amp;D that's driving this?
We don't know that. The argument is that both R&amp;D and database, software and database, tend to be data-intensive. And therefore, because they rely more on the use of data, that makes them more appropriable and tend to have a, might explain this change in the relationship. Breaking down, obviously, we are working on breaking down even further software and R&amp;D to see if it is driven by software or if it's both. And naturally, this would need some complementary analysis on, to understand exactly what kind of technologies are being used in the production of R&amp;D and software and databases assets, of course.
That's a kind of a market power type argument, which I think is interesting.
Yeah.
Consistent with others.
Yeah.
What else we know in the literature? Are there any other questions?
How well do you think the value of the data that firms hold is measured within the kind of current dataset? Is the kind of data intelligence and analysis that they do on it captured? I think you may be alluded to that, some of the developments that statistical organizations are thinking of. And if that was included, do you have any thoughts on how that might change some of your conclusions? Thank you.
I do have some thoughts. We have been working on a related project on trying to do exactly that. So trying to estimate the value of data and see, explore in particular the overlap since. So as you mentioned, if you think of the data stack of, you know, where you have storage and analysis, data intelligence seem to be the one that is actually the most important in terms of contribution to productivity growth. What we do in that analysis is to try and map the overlap between adding this new form of data or this new intangible asset with the ones that we currently have, with the key argument being that a lot of the activities that, it's not just about holding the data, which I would argue is one problem, especially if you go down the story of the appropriability issue. But it actually kind of, in terms of labor productivity and in terms of productivity more in general, what matters is the knowledge, the insights you can extract from the data, which would be the data intelligence, data analysis kind of idea. And that, in that work, we find that that specific asset seems to have quite a bit of overlap with, you know, marketing and the brand and organizational capital in particular, which rely on, at the end of the day, on the extraction of insights and application and applying them to productive activity. So the data story fits into this framework. Naturally, it becomes crucial to understand to what extent that's an overlap and then also to what extent they owning and storing the data gives you privileged access to the insights you can extract from it.
I think I took two questions. So the first is the sensitivity to the time, the time data. You know, you took pre-crisis, you take post-crisis, you have two post-crisis period. Maybe you can explain that, because you have to pass 2011 and you have passed 2014. Past 2014, you do find effects, past 2011, you don't find much of an effect in terms of a continuation of the, so the question also is, I think, what is the effect of the global financial crisis? My second question is, you know, one part of the story is the increased appropriability of data and the national accounts intangibles. The other part of the question is, where do these spillovers from non-national accounts intangibles come from? Because this is stuff like business training and management competencies. And what exactly is the spillover that you see there? If a company invests in management competencies, why would that create a spillover to TFP? That seems to be very appropriate to me. So I'm actually a little bit puzzled that we get so much from the non-national accounts intangibles in terms of positive effects.
So I'll tackle the first one. So the first one, the reason why we decided to, and this has been debated with you in some extent as well. But the reason we decided to go for the 2013 as sort of cutoff was that in our data, we have many European countries. And in Europe, obviously, the financial crisis has been followed by sovereign debt crisis, which really, across countries with different degrees. But if, you know, being Italian, I can say that in Italy, it certainly was a big, had a big impact. And so that's why we decided to use 2014, 13 as a threshold, because that incorporates not just the global financial crisis, but also the sovereign debt crisis. But obviously, it is true, and this is something that deserves further investigation, that A, we find that, for example, this relationship, which, based on which country you include, can change quite significantly, and it's also time sensitive. So there is, the story, I think at this aggregate level, it becomes tricky to pinpoint exactly when and how it's likely that there's a lag across countries. And so obviously, based on which countries and which years you're looking at, you might get slightly different results. So that's a fair point, I think. With respect to the second question, which I actually find quite interesting, and I've been racking my brain a little bit about it. I think in that sense, one answer is that some spillovers might be driven by copying activity. So it's true that, and I think it really comes down from a conceptual point of view to what do we think about the knowledge that these intangible assets generate? And how appropriate and how appropriable and how context-specific do we think it is? And so, for example, you could think that design is to some extent protected by trademarks and copyright law. But at the same time, certain features can be copied. And, you know, you can see it in a lot of computers that are not Apple, and still they all now sort of have the silver body with the black type, and they're all kind of mimic the design from Apple. It's not obviously exactly the same thing, but there is something there. And if you think about organizational capital, it is true that a part, some part of the features of an organization will be firm-specific, so they will apply to that company. But they might not necessarily, there's other parts that might be implemented by other countries. So the example to that it was given about, for example, McDonald's. I went yesterday and I had a takeaway from Leon, and it's exactly the same situation, where you have screens instead of people, which on the one hand is tangible capital, but also it implies reorganization of the labor force that works at these restaurants, which will be likely done in a similar way. So if you see McDonald's that implements it, you can think, well, I should probably do it too. And that would be captured within the organizational capital if you hire more managers, but also certainly the training. So if you have to train people to how to use and how to manage electronic systems or digital systems that allow you to manage your customers, et cetera. So I think that it really, and I think in this sense, there's a lot to be learned from the more kind of management innovation kind of literature that really has spent quite a bit of time thinking about capabilities and how appropriate, non-appropriate they are, how tacit. So I think there's more to be done in that avenue that might help us work out exactly why, where do these spillovers that we do find, where do they actually come from?
Any other questions? Sorry, hold wait.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I missed it, but did you consider lag effect of these spillovers? Like, you know, you're saying that you don't see that much spillovers from national accounts intangibles, but these spillovers, these spillovers can happen like over time. Have you looked at that dynamic? I'm not sure. Yeah.
So here, the exercise we do is a double difference. So we look at changes and then the changes in changes, if you will. So we are trying also exploring lagging, and some of it also is included within the GMM. I think it's an interesting, I don't see, because in this empirical framework, I don't see it obvious how changes in changes in the past would reflect translating changes in changes in changes in the past would reflect translating changes in the present. And I think if we were trying to do, to look at stocks, so at endowments of certain stocks, certain assets, then I think it might make sense. And to be fair, I've been doing some other work, looking at organizational capital, in particular, where we do find that that is the case.
I think we'll stop at that. Wait, there's one more question, a quick question.
Yeah, thank you. Just my question about when you check about the relationship correlation between innovation and productivity. Here, which value have been used for innovation, for example? Have you used a number of measures or a project itself or the import of that innovation? And the second question, is it correct if we use, for example, the import for that country from software and hardware as the growth to use it, that value or that's growth in your national account?
So I didn't quite get the first question. So
Which which value have been used for, to to check the the relationship between or the correlation between innovation and productivity? Which value there was?
So which value between innovation and productivity?
Yeah, yeah.
So what we do here, because it's we do it in a kind of standard new classical model, really, innovation is TFP within this framework. So we have productivity, productivity, which is computer hours, real output per hour worked. And then the residual of it, it's the total factor productivity, which is within this framework, considered as a measure of innovation. We then complement this with information on the capital services from the intangible assets, which is another more explicit, if you will, measure of innovation. So that, within this framework, these values are used. Naturally, you could benchmark it against patenting, and there's a whole discussion to be had of conceptual about what is innovation and whether these measures can capture it appropriately. But within this framework, that's how we 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 proceed. The second question about the importing of so we don't have an explicit measure for the, well, I mean, naturally, the way in which these data are compiled, to look at total investment, say, in hardware, so computer and communication and computer equipment, these would include both those that are bought domestically and those that are imported. For the software, there's a purchase and an own account component overall, and the same goes for the same way is used to compute intangible assets. Because intangible assets are the own account components of the workers that work in a country, so there isn't an imported own account. For the for the purchase component, we use supply and use tables. So the purchase of specific services. Services in supply and use tables are massively domestic. So that that is a component also you can look at in terms of what services are imported. But it's usually very tiny in my experience. So I know that there are, that we've tried to include that. It doesn't, it doesn't really change massively the picture that we get.
That's we're out of time. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, thank you.
Present the next paper. And again, 20 minutes.
Now, in the present, the paper on cracking the productivity code, international comparison of the UK's productivity. So it's a joint work with John Murray at LSC. So without further ado, let's get cracking to crack the productivity code. So as many of you may know, like, there is more and more discussion in both news coverage as well as academia. UK faces huge growth challenges. So part of it is known to because of so-called the recent poly crisis, like the cost of living standard crisis. Cost of living crisis after Russia's invasion of Ukraine, as well as the most recent COVID crisis. But as I'll show in the next slide, many of the problems starts much earlier than that. And also, like, many of you may wonder why growth matters, and particularly, why does productivity growth ultimately matters? So the fundamental reason is that if you think in the long run, what does productivity growth does is it increases the size of the economic pie. So many things we like in life, whether it might be having a tax cut or working less hours whilst you're having the same level of consumption. What we all need are the increase in the size of the economic pie. And also, we can see in the data that the real, which also follows closely with the productivity growth. So in the very first figure here, we use the most recent numbers from the Office of National Statistics and maybe someone here at a conference constructing the data set. So what it looks at is the productivity performance in UK measured by the real value added per hour over time. And we base everything as hundred percent in the financial crisis in the second quarter of 2008. We can see there is a drastic slowdown. The red line shows what actually happened, and the dotted line is our prediction based on growth rate prior to the financial crisis. We can see there is a drastic slowdown in the productivity growth after the financial crisis. And in fact, if the productivity level in the UK continues to grow at the rate prior to the financial crisis, we would have been much better than what we've now. In fact, we will have almost a quarter higher productivity level than what we've been now. So this actually tells us we have incurred a huge economic cost loss after the financial crisis, and this is also one of the key economic problems with this. So in our paper, we're going to look at the pool, why UK's productivity performance has been performed badly after the financial crisis in terms of both levels as well as growth. It's a pretty long paper. We do a lot of robustness time because of the data you share. But I will try my best to summarize it within the next 15 minutes or so. So first of all, we draw upon a few data sources, primarily the EU plans that I think both FLO and Merit has all contributed to. And we also use other sources such as the OECD working hours data to make sure our data is more comparable across countries, especially for levels analysis. And we're going to use, we're going to focus on the market economics, including public sectors like healthcare or education, simply because it's a bit hard to measure in those factors. And we're going to decompose labor productivity into three key components, namely basically the capital intensity, the labor composition, the TFP. And we're going to look at the productivity performance in terms of both levels and as well as growth in the UK and its major peers, namely just US, Germany and France. So before getting into our key result, I want to go through our data sources and methods very quickly. So the primary data source we're going to use is the EU plan data, the most recent release, the EU plan data that I think FLO has talked quite a bit in the just now. So we use this data source mainly for to measure the output as well as capital input. And I would like to highlight a bit two key features in the latest EU plan data. The first one is it has this new harmonized data, capital stock data. So what it does is, it does is it basically reconstructs the capital stock data across countries using a more consistent method. Because different countries construct their capital input data in their national accounts using very different methods. So we want to ensure our capital input data are more comparable across countries. And secondly, I think FLO has also talked quite a bit just now is it provides a estimation incorporating into broader intangibles like marketing and branding, employer providing training. And for the labor input data, which is basically the total hours work, we're going to use the OECD working hours data instead of the hours data in the national accounts. This is mainly because the UK constructs this working hours data in the national accounts using a different data source and method compared to the other countries. So actually, it tends to overestimate UK's working hours data and underestimate is labor productivity. So using the alternative data source from OECD, it kind of helps to this, it helps to reestimate UK's working hours using a similar method as other countries. And this is going to affect the productivity levels a lot and not so much for the growth analysis. So in terms of the composition of the, sorry, the labor productivity, we're going to follow a very standard developing accounting developing accounting approach. For those who are not very familiar with that, we're going to decompose the labor productivity, which is the JVA power into three key components. Part of it is the the capital intensity, which is basically the capital stock over hours worked and weighted by its respective cost share. And part of it is also the labor compensation, which reflects the skills level, age, gender of the working force and weighted by the labor cost share. And finally, the TFP, which is the residue part that was not explained by the differences in capital and labor input. And for the growth accounting, we'll follow a very similar method. Except now we are going to look at the difference in both input and output within the country in the current period and the previous period. So now let me get into our key results. I will begin with our growth analysis. So in our growth analysis, we'll look at a dozen years before and after the financial crisis. So we can see there is a large productivity fall. And UK's productivity are actually performing very well prior to the crisis. So it was growing at a over 2.5% a year, and it actually dropped to less than 0.5% after the financial crisis. So this is at over 2% large for in the productivity growth. So we decompose a large two percentage point slowdown, UK's productivity into different components. And as you can see from the graph, about just over half the slowdown is purely due to TFP. And also, there is a big fall in the capital accumulation rate. Also counts for the overall productivity slowdown, and a very small fracture was actually due to slowdown in the skills accumulation. But you know, this is more like a UK's picture, right? So what does it look like in other countries? So here we plot the productivity slowdown across all countries, and the height of each bar just shows the overall productivity, the overall productivity slowdown. And we can see, even though UK has a very large, so first of all, I think UK has the largest productivity slowdown across all countries. And even though it has a very large TFP slowdown, other countries like US, France has very similar or even larger TFP slowdown. So what it tells us is basically TFP is more of like a global issue rather than a UK-specific problem. But when we look at the slowdown in capital accumulation rate shown by the blue part, UK has the largest slowdown in the capital accumulation rate. And it seems to explain why UK has a particularly worse slowdown compared to other countries. And also a slightly worse slowdown in the skills accumulation rate. But so far, what we look at is the capital in the national council. But what about the capital outside national accounts? It might be that UK are investing more in capitals outside the national accounts. So this graph, they might be look better if we take into account of more capitals. So here, on the right-hand side, we incorporate into, incorporate more intangible capitals. You can think of marketing, branding and employer providing training, where on the right-hand side, on the left-hand side is the capital in the national accounts. You think machineries, you know, plants and equipments owned by firms, right? So we see that, yes, indeed, incorporate broad intangibles, at least to a slightly smaller slowdown capital accumulation rate from negative 0.7 to negative 0.2 percentage points. But still, UK has a larger slowdown in the capital accumulation rate. And it's the differentiating factor that make UK look much worse than other countries. So putting together the growth analysis, UK's worst productivity slowdown seems to be a story about lack of investment in capital stock. So now let's turn into some level analysis. So in our now level analysis, we're going to look at productivity levels across countries in 2019. And we face everything in the UK. So here, what it means is US is 28% higher in terms of real value added per hour compared to the UK. It's a very large gap, and it has been a persistent gap for a while. So if you look at earlier years, there's still a similar large gap between the US and the UK. But you know, US, US is very large economy. What about smaller and similar economies in a European country? So here, we, yes, we do get a smaller productivity gap compared to other European countries, but still a very significant gap, about 13 to 14% lower productivity when compared to France and Germany. But you know, these countries might be, they have more capitals, they are more capital intensive, so they cannot produce more output and more efficient. So in the second bar here, we take into account of the of the difference in capital input in national accounts. So we can see that the difference in capital intensity accounts for about half of the productivity gap in European countries like France and Germany. But a slightly smaller portion with the US, but still a quite significant portion of about six percentage points. And this is only the capital national accounts, and let's incorporate more capitals outside the national account, right? So now we can see it makes very little difference for France and Germany. But it further decreases the productivity gap to the US to around 13% when we incorporate into more intangible capitals with the US. So what it basically tells us is US is a much more intangible intensive country than most European countries. And finally, in the last bar here, we incorporate the difference in skills level of labor force. And we can see that, so you can think of the last bar as a kind of a TFP measure, right? So you can see that after taking account of both difference in capital and labor input, the productivity difference dropped to around six to seven percentage points difference between the US and Germany. So and but a much higher at France. But for most countries like US and Germany, the capital plays equal or even more larger role than TFP when explaining the productivity gap. Whereas France, I think, because France is the the TFP gap is likely larger, is larger than the capital, but the capital intensity still comes for about half of the productivity gap. So what it really tells us is very similar to our growth analysis. So TFP plays a role in explaining the productivity gap. But capital seems also play a very, very important role in explaining why UK is not doing very well compared to other countries. So now comes our conclusions and policy part. So so far, we've seen that UK is not doing very well in the productivity in terms of both levels and growth. And generally, it is actually due to a combination of factors. So first of all, of course, there is a global problem with having sustainable growth over time. Many countries are struggling with having large productivity growth. Like, part of it could be that, you know, ideas are harder to find these days. It's hard to find big technological breakthroughs that actually greatly enhance the productivity. And also, there is mismeasurement issues as discussed in the previous session. You know, GDP is always hard to measure. And there is a lot of inconsistencies when we try to compare data across countries. But we don't think the mismeasurement issue come to explain why UK was doing worse than other countries. Simply for two reasons. First, if you look across countries, we don't think there is a particularly worse measurement issue in the UK that make it look much worse than other countries. And secondly, when we look in, within UK over time, we can see UK has a much worse productivity performance after the financial crisis. So we don't think there is a particular So we don't think there is a particular reason that we should believe that UK's measurement suddenly become much worse after the financial crisis that make it the productivity performance worse after the financial crisis. And of course, UK was hit hard during the financial crisis because it has a very big financial sector. And there is Brexit afterwards brings in a lot of uncertainties that kind of deters investment up. And also UK has a generally low private and public investment. And there was a tough austerity program starting in 2010 that also kind of affect our productivity growth. But like regardless of all those stats, right? What really matters is how we get out of this, right? It seems to be that UK's productivity problem has been due to a series of unfortunate event. We have first Brexit or we have financial crisis, Brexit, we have a quite a bit of political churns in the past few years. But the fundamental, the most important question is what is the right policy we should have to actually get out of this productivity problem? So I think first of all, simply making less pessimistic and having a greater stability go to help us to kind of encourage investment. And secondly, I think there is no magic bullet or a short term solution that going to fix this, fix this problem. What we really need is we really need a coordinated, long term approach that to encourage growth, encourage investment. And it means that we need a credible growth plan delivered by, that can be delivered by our institutions. And thirdly is we need a better supply of finance for investment from the pension funds. So UK stands out internationally for being have very low investment from domestic investment from its pension funds. So having a greater like institutional involvement of pension funds investment kind of helps to crowd in more private investment, also kind of encourage corporations take a long term perspective when they try to invest and grow their business. And finally, you know, higher education is a very key export sector in the UK. But intermediate skills are often a bit of like lacking behind for those, for example, the high school dropouts or people who do not get to go to universities. And also there is a large skill gaps when in certain strategic areas, right? And also when economy transitioning towards a brainner economy, we really need to help those workers to transit and adopt to those changes in the demand of skills. So reform of system, further education, occasional education without skills are going to help us tackle those problems. I think that's all for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very interesting presentation. Very good. Oh, sorry. That maybe because I was mic. All right, thank you. So first of all, very good, interesting presentation. Thanks for this. I had a just a basic question, actually, on your last chart on these productivity levels. When you made these adjustments for capital and skills. For which years this and how did you construct this? Or can you talk a little bit about how you how you constructed this?
Oh, so it's it's for the year 2019. So and before what COVID happened is this kind of disrupted it quite a bit. And we would, we we construct this is simply we, because like you can decompose labor productivity into capital input, difference in hours, difference labor skills and difference in TFP. And here for each bar, we're going to remove the difference due to each component. So for example, the second bar here is the after removing a difference in capital stock in national accounts. So that was, and the last slide is removing the difference in both labor skills as well as difference in capital intensity, so it's the TFP measure.
Yeah, but how do you get to the levels of those? Because in your production, earlier production function was a growth rate, right?
There is the first one, there is actually in terms of levels. And the first top is in terms of levels. That's how we do the level account.
I see. All right.
Are you asking about relative prices and how you actually estimate the relative prices?
Oh, so first, I think we take the real capital stock value from Phillips, like the EU claims construct. And then we convert it using some PPPs.
Did you have specific PPPs for?
Yeah, that's one of the key problem we have. We have some robustness track in the appendix using like capital specific PPPs or stuff. But the problem is there is, to the, to my knowledge, there is no good data sources for PPP, capital specific PPPs, especially when we want to take into account of intangibles. There are some PPPs, but there's for tangible capitals, only not for intangibles. That's why we're kept into the overall PPP, but we do some robustness trap using the capital PPPs. It shows qualitatively similar.
Okay, thank you.
There's two at the back.
Hi, yeah, so thank you for your presentation. Just briefly, just I appreciate it must be dry hair, so you can take a drink of water. What I wanted to ask was you were talking about policy advice. And that's interesting because as you've decomposed capital, what I was wondering was, would you have extended this research? So you can deconstruct between a public capital and private capital to draw upon policy implications?
We didn't do that in our report, but there is a report done by Anna and Valerie and her co-authors on Congress 2013. Maybe you can check it out. They do compare the investment from the public sector versus the private sector.
No, thanks a lot. Enjoyed the talk. I have quite a similar question, but it would be interesting to map out the investment, but also specifically into both physical, like educational capital and also health capital going forward. So some of the numbers I've seen in terms of, this is after your period, right? But post-COVID, some of the people leaving the workforce, which are more experienced, older people who are more productive, which is your skill term, are kind of line up pretty well. People are on long term waiting lists for the NHS, for instance, right? Where kind of been pushed out of the workforce, basically, or have their hours reduced, right? So I think there's probably a lot of data out there to think, following up on that question and to the kind of the investment function and seeing to what extent that might explain country level differences. Because I know some of the like countries like the US have kind of natural stabilizers for things like human capital investment and things like that, because they're funded locally, right? Whereas the UK is much more centralized. So I wonder to what extent that might be driving some of these things.
You mean incorporating the capital, human capital investment into the?
Precisely, right? Because since this overlaps the austerity, right? So if you think about a human capital product investment function, if you talk to any teachers in a M1 stating school in the in the UK, you're going to hear that they're hugely under invested the last decade.
Yeah, I think so far, like now for our labor composition measures is not just purely based on educational level. It's also based on age and gender. So it kind of captures like things like health or stuff. Of course, it's not a perfect measurement. But yeah, like that's what we try to capture the human capital difference. And we also construct a human capital index based on the years of education and stuff. But it gives very similar result.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions? I want, while the thing is coming down, can you go back to your levels chart? I think I think it would be useful in this to really compare historically because there were other exercises like done by myself and others, Bart and others, you know, a long time ago. And the picture looks very similar, actually. It looks like, you know, historically, we've got a very persistent problem. When when we focus on the fall in productivity from 19, you know, after the financial crisis, talking, comparing with 1995 to then, that's not a really great comparison because the UK had quite high productivity relative to other countries from 1995 to early 2000s. So I think there's something, you know, nice about looking at the historical. And when I'm looking at this picture, I see this, when I, if I recall back to what we did, you couldn't explain very much of the difference between the UK and the US by capital in the in that earlier period. But now, once you bring in the intangibles, you're actually explaining quite a lot. And that, I think, is a nice story that you could bring out. The skills looks kind of the same, maybe, I'm not sure I believe the French number so much. As Philip knows, there's, we still have to do a lot of work on the on the skills. But I think, you know, taking that historical perspective would actually improve, you know, the story of it. Bart, do you want to?
Yeah, I actually want to talk about the growth numbers, not about the level numbers. And that's really about the question about the endogenity of capital on TFP. Because of these growth accounting exercise, we just split this up. But obviously, you know, your traditional neoclassical literature would tell you that slower TFP growth, of course, will have its endogenous effects on capital. And so, for example, somebody like John Vernal has done these kind of exercises. And he basically argues that it's basically all TFP and K basically disappears. Have you done any testing on that or what you?
Yeah, we we do, exactly like you said, we've done a robustness trap using John Vernal's method, where you just denominator is not ours, you use your output. So we kind of assume kind of partially solves the endogenity problem. And we get quantitatively a smaller impact of capital because that in that case, you kind of the share, the weight on capital is smaller. But still, quantitatively, it holds because UK is the only country with a large negative drop in capital intensity. So it's the scale, the quantitative scale is smaller, but the stories do hope UK has a worse capital slowdown now.
Okay, I think we're going to have to leave it. Do we have any? One more, okay. Quick question.
Okay, I'll make it very quick. I just was, you know, you said you did a lot in here. I wanted to know if you did anything on TFP dispersion across these countries?
TFP dispersion across countries?
Yeah.
Sorry, your question.
So so did you look at the dispersion of TFP in these different countries? So my sense was that the UK has this problem of, you know, long left hand tail of unproductive, unproductive firms. And a bit of consolidation might not be a bad thing. So a bit more concentration may not be a bad thing. You know, policy often sort of lionizes the small firms and villainizes the big firms. And that's one way that a policy could possibly help with.
The TFP discharges across firms?
Yes.
Okay, we haven't done that in the paper because we use more like aggregate level data. But that will be something interesting to try.
Okay, so let's. We're not doing too badly on time. We're only five minutes over.
All right.
So you've got 20 minutes.
Good. All right. Am I on? Yes, good. All right, so last presentation of the day. Sure, we're all looking forward to drinks and dinner. And our brain power has lost a little bit of steam, perhaps. Oh, come on. Already destroyed it. Sure, so I can start a little bit with introduction. So yeah, my name is Claus De Vries. I'm with Statistics Netherlands in the National Accounts Branch, actually. So a lot of this talk about things that are in or outside of the scope of national accounts are very, very close to me, actually. What I would be presenting is some collaborative work with Bart van Ark and Abdul Eremdan from the University of Gronian. Yeah, I guess it's fair to say all three of us are sort of Clem's veterans. We've been working on Clem's data for a very long time. So we were very excited to see the new release come out recently. And this, especially as it was, you know, as Philippe already explained very eloquently, especially with the additional data on intangibles. Because, yeah, so we've heard that many times already today, but intangibles are really a very important in today's, you know, modern economy in translating the or facilitating the transition to the new, the new technology. So whether it's ICT, AI, robotics, biotech, all those kind of things. It's very important to have, you know, good intangibles, so about data, skills, organizational. So we're, you know, we're fully behind that and we're very, we're very excited to see those data come online. So what I'll do, just, you know, in the next, let's say, 15 minutes is take you through a little bit the journey that we that we took through the data. I'll give you some of the highlights, some of the things that we found. I'll do that by, I'll start out with a little bit of an introduction and point out also where, you know, what are the angles that we took. It's very similar to, or it has a lot of overlap with both of both of your papers, but I'll try to highlight a little bit where we took some different, different angles. I'll then go over a couple of our results, a couple of charts, a couple of tables. And then I'll end with some, some of some of the main conclusions, some of the main points. So the overall context is, well, the bigger context, of course, no need to explain that now anymore. But that's obviously the productivity growth slowdown. But also, if you focus a little bit more on intangibles, you also find that there in the literature, there's increasing concerns regarding the changing role of intangibles in the in the in the modern economy. And some of these concerns focus on intangibles itself. So maybe some, some authors say, actually, it has slowed down the investment in intangibles. Some other concerns relate to the spillovers. We've already heard a little bit about it, but whether the spillovers to TFP have been have been weakening. And finally, there's also concerns regarding the increased complexity of joining up different types of of tangible and intangible capital and how that is translating into into TFP growth. So we thought, you know, we have this great new dataset. So we wanted to explore basically whether the productivity growth slowdown that we are seeing, whether, you know, we can attribute some of it to, or basically, what is the relationship to the to the intangibles? What are some of the links that we that we can find? We basically tried to do that through three channels. The first is a kind of pretty direct channel. So so that's really, you know, how much is is intangibles directly contributing to productivity growth? So that's the capital deepening channel. The second channel is more related to the spillovers. So not directly the labor productivity growth, but more directly related to the impact on on TFP. And then finally, we're going to look a little bit at some of the complementarities between tangibles and intangibles. And you could see this as some kind of like an indirect impact on on TFP. So very briefly, on the data and the methods, obviously, we use the EU Clem's database. We focus on the pre-financial crisis period and the post-financial crisis period. You'll see some overlap with the other papers, the way it's, you know, being sliced and diced. We we prefer this disparitization, 96 to 2007 and 11 to 2019. We also focus on the market economy, just been explained also in other other presentations, the public sector. Yeah, I would say it's also measured differently across countries. So I think that's also an issue and if you include those in your in your measures. And this, and the other thing is we, the market economy also excludes real estate sector, which is also a sector that has a lot of owner occupied housing and doesn't have a very direct relationship to labor productivity. We focus on the US, the UK and the and an EU aggregate. Our EU aggregate is based on nine countries, the nine biggest countries, mostly based on data availability. Our, the capital split, we split up tangible capital in ICT and non ICT. And our, the intangible capital, we split between what we call technology related intangibles and sort of business innovation related. I'll get to that in a second, how we did that. And then finally, we also want to add a little bit to the discussion in terms of industries. Because we're talking a lot about macro, macro numbers. We also wanted to shed a bit of light on We also wanted to shed a bit of light on on industries and particularly, can we say something about leading and lagging industries? And is there something, something to the story there? And then finally, and this is the last part, this is still a little bit under development, I should say. So it comes with a little bit of a health warning. We tried some simple regressions to try to estimate spillovers. And we did some, also very relatively basic correlation metrics just to see if we could find some, you know, some, some insights on where, on the complementarity story between intangibles and intangibles. So, as I promised, very briefly, on the split that we made, that we made between intangibles. The chart has been shown before now, so won't go too deeply. But basically, what we, what we would argue is that the intangibles that are currently capitalized in the national accounts, they're broadly much more directly related to technology, to the creation and the use of technology. And the ones that are currently not yet in the national account, so most of it is probably currently in the intermediate inputs. So it's not in GDP. We would say on the whole, they're more related to the sort of the business innovation related. They're not directly related to the technology, but they make, as I said in the introduction, they make a lot of the, you know, the new technologies sort of workable. Yeah, so that's the, that's it for the introduction. Now I'm going to shift to a little bit of a part on some of the findings, some of the results. And we'll start with some basic numbers on, on the intangible investment data. So we'll start with the actual size. So what is the size of the, of the intangible investment? And particularly relative to tangible investment. And basically, what we see across the three regions that we focus on is the increasing sort of the march of the intangibles, if you will, right? And in most countries currently now, at least in the EU as a whole, not in all countries yet, but in most countries, intangibles are a bigger part of investment than, than tangible. Obviously, this is including the non-national accounts intangibles. So this is, you won't find this in the official statistics. You can also see particularly in the UK where the non-national accounts intangibles, so that's the light blue part, the business innovation related intangibles, make up a very, very large part. So yeah, I guess takeaway, it's very large and it's growing overall, over the time period that we study. So that's the size, that's the extent of the investment. So let's look a little bit at some of the developments over time, the growth rates. So what we did is we looked at the actual investment growth. This is real investment, so it's excluding the price effects, actual investment growth and the stocks growth. The stocks of tangibles and intangibles. And what we find here for the, for the EU is overall, if we if you look at the right-hand panel, that's the intangible related capital. We see the investment growth rates are, well, they haven't really changed massively pre and post crisis. But we do see some slowdown in the, in the stocks growth rate. I mean, it's not, not very big, but there's some, you know, a moderate slowdown. And the reason between those, you know, the reason those could differ could be because, you know, the way you calculate the stocks is you accumulate investment over time. And if the stocks grow slower than your investment, that probably means that you're shifting to more assets that have a higher depreciation rate, so the dropout of the capital stock more quickly, so to say. So this is for the EU. If we turn to the, to the UK. Yes, yeah. So in the UK, we do see a slowing. If we go again to the right-hand panel, we do see that the technology-related intangible investment growth and also the stocks growth has slowed pre and post crisis. But we actually see an acceleration in the, the non-national accounts or the business innovation related intangibles. And again, in the stocks, in both cases, they slow down a little bit. The US has a relatively similar picture. Also here, we see the slowdown in the, in the technology-related intangibles. But again, an acceleration in the non-national accounts, the business innovation related intangibles. So all in all, what we find here is that, at least in terms of the actual investment growth rates, it's clear that the economy is becoming much more tangible intensive. And overall, the intangible investment growth rates have not really leveled. And there's a slight slowdown in the stocks growth, but overall, there's not much, there's not much of a, of a, of a big story there, I would say. There's a bigger story in the, the tangibles, particularly the ICT tangibles, which has, which has slowed down much more. Yeah, so that's the, the investment story. If we move to the so this is all a little bit indirect, I guess, if we move to the direct contribution to productivity growth. We looked at the, the now well-known growth accounting decomposition. So again, this is the supply-side decomposition of productivity growth. Where you look at how much capital deepening, how much labor composition and TFP is contributing to labor productivity growth. And you can clearly see the slowdown here in aggregate productivity growth. And again, I guess, you know, a bit adding to what she just mentioned is that a lot of the slowdown is in total factor productivity. But as you can see in the capital parts, is that also the tangible capital deepening has really slowed quite substantially. And the, the blue part, so our, you know, our measure of interest, the, the actual intangible capital deepening has not really slowed down so much. So it's actually, you know, still holding up relatively, relatively well. We see some slowing in the UK, but overall, overall intangibles contribution to labor productivity growth has been relatively steady. That's the positive side. You could also point to a negative side and say, well, if intangibles are becoming so much more important, they should probably offset some of the weakness in intangibles. So we'll get to that later in the presentation. So that's the direct contribution. Our next, next step was to look at, because this is, again, this is all macro, high level. We also wanted to see if we can find some, some interesting stories actually in the industry data. And, well, we didn't want to drown in all the industry detail. So one way we found a good way, good, an elegant way to distinguish between different types of industries. And the way we did that is look at sort of divide sectors into whether they're intangible intensive. So you could say they're at the frontier of applying intangibles. And we measure this by their average intangible investment share, whether that's above the median. And also, we, and the other side is the, what you could call the less intangible intensive industry. So they're below the median in terms of their intangible investment share. So you could, you could say they're sort of lagging in terms of adoption of intangibles. Yeah, just very briefly, as you can see, in the intangible intensive industries, there are a lot of, a lot of them are in the manufacturing, which could, could raise some eyebrows perhaps. But a lot of that has to do with the R and D investment, because a lot of R and D investment is concentrated in manufacturing. On the other hand, we do also have a couple of very large service sector industries in the intangible intensive industries. So for example, this code M and N, it's a very large service sector industry. And that's particularly where you see the, sort of the non-national accounts intangibles being a very, very large share. So if we break down the productivity growth contributions by these two groups, what do we get? So again, the contributions to the aggregate productivity growth rates, the same numbers as we saw in the growth accounting decomposition, but then broken down by the industry contributions. And here we find something that is, yeah, I guess, a bit worrying, at least it's very striking. And that is that a lot of the slowdown that you see in the productivity growth are actually related to the most intangible intensive industries. So that's the green part here in these, in these slides. So that points out that, you know, it's not just a problem of, of adoption in the sort of the lagging, lagging industries, but there's clearly also issues at the frontier of the, in frontier firms, firms that are very, very advanced in their investment of intangibles. Yeah, so so far, this is all, I'm trying to move towards, towards the end. So far, this is all very, you know, very looking at, you know, actual investment, growth accounts, industry contributions. We wanted to also look a little bit more into indirect impact. And for this, again, this is a part that is still a little bit on the development. You can also see we slightly different tangible categories here. So there's a little bit of a, you know, still work in progress. But basically, the intuition here, what we wanted to see is so, okay, maybe intangibles, you know, they're, the, and they're still, you know, in one sense, they're still going strong, but we do have a productivity slowdown. So maybe there's something wrong with the, maybe there's something going wrong with the spillovers related to, you know, how much investment in intangibles is helping TFP grow. So we did this by regressing TFP growth on capital stock per hour worked for the intangibles. And we used the, and we also, yeah, I see now I missed to include the, the, the equation. But basically, we also have industry fixed effects included. What I'm showing here is the coefficient, so that's really our interest. So if the coefficient is positive and is significant, that means that intangibles have a have a, have a, have a strong role in driving TFP growth. And if they're negative, then, then that's not the case. So what would we find here is it's relatively, relatively mixed, the evidence. So there's a lot of numbers here, but if you focus on the columns three and six, you'll see for the European Union, before the crisis, it was positive and insignificant. But after the crisis, actually turned negative. So it has weakened actually there. For the UK, we do find strengthening role. So it was negative before the crisis, but it turned positive after the crisis. So what this means is that if you do have a bit of a weakening in the intangible capital, that also means that you're going to have a slower TFP growth. And then finally, for the US is, there's not much, there's not much evidence in the way of direct spillovers from, from intangibles on TFP. Then finally, the remaining channel that we have left is the, is the, the complementarity story. So maybe the, what we wanted to see is how sensitive is the TFP growth related to complementarities between different types of tangible and intangible capital? And intuition again here is, as also has been explained in other, in other presentations, maybe the current environment is, you know, it's becoming more complex. And we wanted to check this, again, this is very, very preliminary still, but wanted to check whether we could find anything interesting between, if we see what is the correlation between capital deepening of tangible assets versus intangible assets? And what we find there is that there are definitely some correlations, some of it is as expected. So with, for example, between software and hardware, which is, I guess, to be expected in a, in a digital environment. But we also found some strong correlations between some of the intangibles, particularly the, the non-national accounts intangibles and the, and, and the tangible capital deepening. So that could point to the fact that, because we saw earlier, that a lot of the slowdown in productivity growth has to do with the tangible capital deepening. And given, you know, as we see now, is that there's, you know, there's quite some correlation, some complementarities going on that it could be that, that the collapse in tangible capital, that that has also been hampering the the effects of intangible capital in driving productivity growth. But again, the last bullet here, as I mentioned earlier, this is still work in progress. There's certainly some more thorough econometric analysis needed. But so far, our preliminary evidence seems to suggest, as I, as I mentioned earlier. So coming to the end, our main findings. So overall, we looked at, you know, the goal was, what does the intangible capital have to do? You know, what, what does have to do with the productivity growth slowdown? Now, overall, we do find intangible investment trends are not so, are not so negative. Investment is still going strong, there's still, there's a high level of investment in intangibles and the growth rates haven't leveled off so much, particularly not related to the, to the tangible capital. Also, the intangible capital direct contribution to productivity growth has remained positive. So overall, again, that's, that's a clear picture that intangible capital has become very important in our modern day economies. However, if we look at the spillover, so how is it related, how is it translating into TFP growth? There we do find, as I, as I mentioned earlier, there are some, some evidence of positive spillovers, but it's, yeah, it's not very, very uniform across countries. And there's also some evidence, as we judge from the correlation metrics, that there's some increasing complexity in joining up the different types of tangible and intangible capital to generate TFP growth. So on the whole, are intangible, you know, are intangibles running out of, out of steam? I guess the answer is a little bit of yes and a little bit of no. So let me leave it with that.
Questions? Sorry, all the way down.
Thanks. Just out of curiosity, how, you mentioned, maybe I didn't catch it, how do you, the intangible intensive industries, so these are shares, shares of intangible investment?
I did it again.
Over value added or is it?
Yeah.
Of a total investment? So is it, is it the composition of total investment or?
Yeah, it's very simple. It's just looking at the share of investment as a share of GDP. Or as a share of GDP, right? Because we take market economy, we don't take GDP.
Because I was surprised with the, that food and beverage comes out as intangible intensive. Because the rest made all sense to me, I think.
Yeah.
And
It, it could be, yeah.
Is it that because they don't invest much in other assets? So what I guess, my, what I would have in mind is the relationship between intangible intensity, intensity in computers, as you do, which I think makes sense, and the composition of investment within an industry. So it might be that food and beverage doesn't invest much at all. But in, how much of the literate it does invest is actually intangible versus something else? So I'm wondering if there's, that's a different way of, of measuring this possibly, where intensity is not related to how much you invest in general, but the composition of your investment, however little it might be. I don't know if, maybe it doesn't change much, but it surprised me just, yeah.
Well, it's your data, so.
I know, I know. That's, I mean, I will look into it, but I'm wondering.
No, I mean, yeah, it's a bit of a rough approximation. Actually, our, our, our intuition or our inspiration came from an earlier taxonomy from the OCD on the digital intensity, where they look at a lot more, you know, a lot more variables, you know, ICT workers, how much e-commerce sales do they do? Where they look at a lot more, you know, a lot more variables, you know, ICT workers, how much e-commerce sales do they do and things like that. So. And our, yeah, that's, that's a fair point. Our taxonomy is a bit more simple in that case. So that's, yeah, that could be a point for improvement. Yeah. I guess our, yeah, we just wanted to see, you know, whether industries that are investing heavily in intangibles. We just wanted to have a, you know, a quick, quick understanding of whether whether they whether they contribute more or less to the slowdown. So. That's why we chose this, yeah. Admittedly, a bit crude to could measure, yeah.
Other questions? I mean, on that on that issue, I was surprised you have industries M and N together. I mean. They're very different. N is just cleaning services and very low level support. And the new Euclam does split the two of them out. So, you know, and I I would at least make that division, because I'm pretty sure that N is not an intangible intensive industry. And also, arts and recreation was a very intangible intensive. But I suppose parts of it are and parts aren't. I mean, it's a problem when you use these taxonomies, where you do the dividing line is very much open.
And also, if you, if you, the way you do it is essentially you take the, well, because you do the quartiles, but you could, I would assume that if you use the. Average, like in a sort of review comparative advantage kind of. That the average would be very different from the median, which, so the threshold you set. Might be different in terms of what you get in terms of intangible intensity intensity, if you compare it to the average rather than the. Quintiles or quartiles of the distribution, okay? So you might get something different now.
That could be, yeah, yeah.
But I obviously it gets into, yeah, no, that's a, that's um.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Bart?
Got a comment. We're debating a lot in between the offers, the differences between countries. I actually do think, given that we're in the UK, the UK is a big outlier. If you look at these data, you can actually see that the UK is by far the most capital intensive, intangible intensive country. Particularly in non-national accounts intangibles. It also shows by far the biggest slowdown in the intangible intensive industries, and it has very strong spillovers. So you can really see what's happening. You know, if if we look for an explanation what's happening in the UK, it basically means that we are. An extremely business innovation intensive country. We are highly concentrated in a few intentional intensive industries, which have big spillovers to TFP and have slowed down massively. So if you take all that together, I think there's a real story for the UK here and being a big outlier. If you compare it to. Most other large European countries or the US, which also is obviously very intangible intensive, with a much larger economy and seems to be much broader. Dissemination of these technologies. I do think that actually, when you look into these data, and that's why I would recommend everyone to, really take a good look at individual countries in these data, because you do store, you see stories that are actually quite different. And that does help us to understand some of the differences that we see in productivity in countries. So that was the comment I had to make. That's really what these data are bearing out.
Any other questions? Wait, can I ask a question about this to Philip? I mean, part of, you get very high economic competencies in the UK. And part of it, I think, has to do with the fact you're using occupation data. And that's. The way we classify people or workers on the occupation data, there's a lot more managers in the UK than in other countries. And this has been a problem for some time. I don't know whether you, in the in the latest versions, you actually tried to address this or not, but it is it. It might not be as real as you as you think, that the, you know, that the UK is. So in so much more intangible intensive, at least in the economic competencies than other countries. It could be just the way we classify things.
I mean, I think that's very possible. We we work with the data we have, as obviously the. The whole LFS and ASH, ASH data in the UK, so the whole, there there might be some of that. I think. The UK, and I think this is also related to what Bob was saying, that's. When we do this analysis at the country level, I think it would be interesting to find a way to account for sectoral composition. So. So for example, Germany at the aggregate level is not as intangible intensive as you would think, but. Part of it, I'm sure, must be related to the fact that Germany has a specialization in sectors that are not intangible intensive, while the UK. Does a lot of services and services are very intangible intensive. So I think there's a structural component as well as. A measurement issue that might be related with the data we use. At the moment, we'll be, for the next releases, we'll have to move. Out of or find a way to have an organic access to UK data because of Brexit, of course. So that that might be the opportunity to look into that, of course, into these issues of how workers are classified for sure. Yeah.
Other questions? So we we've kind of run out of time. But like, can I continue a little? I think I think making the statement that there's a problem at the frontier by looking at intangible versus tangible intensive isn't really. Correct. I think I really do think you need to look at firm level data before you can make that statement. Because.
It's just a lot of firms.
You're aggregating too much together. I think you need some.
Just a lot of firms in that sector. I'm not saying all firms in an intangible intensive sector falling behind, and then maybe there may be dispersion. But apparently, the aggregate of firms in these sectors are actually showing the biggest slowdown. Now, do we need more micro research? Sure, but I'm not sure why this would not be.
My objection to use the use of the word frontier to describe. By by aggregation, using aggregation industry data, I think you really need to look at firm level data. Look. I don't I don't think in the UK, the problem is really at the very frontier firms. And we've had lots of discussions about this. I mean, I thought we kind of agreed that we have fewer frontier firms rather than there being a. A big problem at the frontier. So then when you use that kind of frontier language, when you're using industry data, I think it's kind of misleading. Well, we can discuss this over a drink, because I think we're eating into the drinking time. So I'd like to, again. Say thank you to all the presenters and everybody asking questions.